In the absence of the Chairman, Milton Campbell, who's a little under the weather, I'll be trying to take care of Philly in his place and call the meeting to order. I'd like to recognize for the invocation be Commissioner Josh Lael and for the pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Jeff Peel.
If you please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity you give us to gather this evening to try to improve Alexander County in any way that we can. Dear God, please continue to have your protective hand on our fire, police, emergency personnel and military. Dear Heavenly Father, as we convene tonight and deal with the business of Alexander County, guide us in our decisions, help us to do, always do what's best for the citizens of the county. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the rain and thank you most of all for your son. In the name of prayer, amen.
If you would join me in pledge, a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize any commissioners who have a commission report at this time.
Yes, sir. I'd like to speak of the meeting we had with the health board and the county health report is in all of our packets and it's available at several places, but I think county office building, library, online. But the areas, the priority areas that we continue to work on are healthy families, mental health, substance abuse prevention, and that sounds like an ongoing story as we have so much focus on families and family restoration and mental health issues that we're facing and substance abuse. These are things that are very challenging and the health department is real proactive in all of that, but you have a packet in your book and like I said, they're available for public viewing at, online and at the library and at the county office.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Peel.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to congratulate Schneider Mills for 100 years of service to Alexander County and we've got their leadership here in the audience tonight. Unfortunately, I was not able to be there on Saturday when they had their 100th anniversary celebration for Alexander County. They are, you know, part of the bedrock of Alexander County and I read the, there was an insert in the Taylorsville Times last week and I read through all of it and it was just really interesting to find out about everything that, the history of Schneider Mills and how they have been a part of this community and the changes that that company being located here has had on this county and the people here. And we appreciate you guys being here and the commitment that you've made to Alexander County. We do appreciate it.
And we appreciate that. Thank you, Chairman Mayberry. Anyone else have a commission report?
One brief thing I would say about Schneider Mills, actually my, I guess I'm, I should be somewhat thankful to Schneider Mills. My grandfather worked there his entire adult career and retired from there. And actually, I have his, I have his old toolbox, he was a fixer, and I have his toolbox and it has some rather strange little things, little tools in it that I have no idea what they would have fixed and or might still, might still be good for, but Schneider Mills has definitely positively affected Alexander County for a very long time.
Thank you, Commissioner Lael. Yeah, they've definitely been a part of life and I think, has anyone signed up for public comment? I've spoken with Mr. Byrd. If you don't mind, just come on up. I've got just a little bit of report to give and then we'll let you say a few words about, if you want to come on up to the podium. I'm on the jail naming committee and we had a meeting and that's coming along pretty good. Remember June the 2nd, that will be out at the detention center, jail complex for the renaming of the, to the Elijah Beber complex for that. So that's all moving along and things are coming along as scheduled, so just wanted to give that update. Mr. Byrd, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. My name's Hank Byrd. I'm the president of Schneider Mills and we want to thank Alexander County, the Board of Commissioners and all the people in the county for supporting us. We've been in business 100 years. We celebrated our 100th anniversary this weekend. Just for your information, on Friday, we had our customers and suppliers in, from as far away as California and New York, Connecticut, Rhode Island. We had somewhere 85% of our business customers showed up to help us celebrate on Friday. And then on Saturday, we had a carnival for our employees and it turned out to be a big time. We had approximately 500 people show up, retirees, employees, their families, and it was a lot of fun. Just in case you ever wondered about our environmental, we had a little fishing rodeo in our retention ponds. They caught over 60 fish in an hour and a half, so we were thrilled. We've been here for 71 years and it's a large part of our, our life. Alexander County has supported us throughout our career here and the town of, of, help me do, Taylorsville has been a big support. And anything we've ever needed to do or wanted to do, we felt like we always had the support of this county and the people in it. The people have been, become our associates and our friends and our family and it's very important to us. I won't tell you we're high maintenance, but we do, we do, we've been getting together so long, sometimes I think we might take each other for granted, so, but we always know if, if, if we need you or you need us, we're there to help each other. So especially the education for the county, we've seen that improve a lot over the years. We depend on them for our next generation of workers. From your grandfather's toolbox, which was all mechanical, most of our equipment today is all electrical. Three-fourths of our production equipment has been purchased since the year 2000. We're very modern. We've invested in excess of $40 million into Schneider Mills in the last 10 years and that's paid off for us. We've had a good run of business. We have good years and bad years, but the Schneider family has enabled us to live and prosper. And just for the people, over the last 10 years, we've increased our wage base, our employees 25%. So through the recession, we were able to hand out wage increases to our people. So we believe we're a good place to work. We actively encourage the community to support us, the fire department, the police. Never been anything but great for us and we feel very comfortable. And really, about eight years ago, we started up a small business down the road where called Composite Fabrics of America. We're provide, we started up with a view to the future. That has grown from three people to about 20 people, a two-shift, five-day operation. And we expect that to double or triple over the next several years. And we did that with the support of the county and the people here. So we want to thank you, we want to thank the community and most of all, we want to thank our employees for being with us and able to be successful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could, my, my association with Mr. Byrd and with Schneider has been more over the years with the school system and my former role, but I'd like to say that they have always been a fantastic partner, contributing a large sum of money to the education foundation and providing scholarships and anything that we ever needed. So we're, we're very thankful that we've got great people and a wonderful industry like Schneider Mills to be right here in our community.
Yes, sir. We thank you for your company and just as everyone else has said, for the jobs that's there, for the foundation that y'all have and being a solid business and we can see that from the involvements that's been going in the past. We want to continue getting better and doing the same thing in the future and we appreciate what you do. Appreciate y'all being here tonight and if there's something that we can do, let us know. Thank you.
One more thing, we'll do this again and not end it here.
All right. I hope to be there.
Yeah, we'll put it on our calendar. Thank you.
Ronnie will speak for you.
Yeah. Yeah. Moving on to our regular meeting, public comment, has anyone signed up? No one's? Okay. All right. Okay. Sorry about that. Skip to one thing here, we'll have to back up. Everyone's had a chance to see the agenda and look over it. I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move. Second.
Okay. You have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on into our regular meeting and our public comment's already been covered. It's like number two is our National EMS Week proclamation and I would ask Doug Gillespie if he would read that resolution also, Fox.
Thank you for the time. Again, this year is National EMS Week proclamation. I'll just read from it. Whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service and whereas the members of the emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival recovery rate, excuse me, the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Whereas the emergency medical service consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators and others. Whereas the members of the emergency medical service team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Whereas it's appropriate to recognize the values and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by the designated emergency service week. And under it says, now therefore I, Milton Campbell, Chairman, Alexander County Board of Commissioners, Taylorsville, North Carolina, in recognition of this event due hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through the 27th of 2017 is Emergency Medical Service Week with the theme Always in Service. We would like to encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities and it's adopted the first day of May 2017 with signatures from Jamie Elmstarnes, clerk to the board, Milton Campbell, Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd ask for a vote on the, or motion on the resolution.
Make a motion to approve the resolution as read.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second.
Third.
Any discussion? If not?
Just before we go on and vote on this, I'd just like to say that, you know, we appreciate everything that the emergency medical services community does in Alexander County. You guys are well-trained. It's not just the paramedics, it's, it's the whole community involved there.
That's correct. First responders, fire departments, dispatchers.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's not, everybody just thinks it's paramedics sometimes, but it's not. It's, it's everybody involved and everybody does a great job.
As we, when we educate, we use what we call the chain of survival and that starts with also the, the person that's calling the illness in. If suddenly, suddenly a person collapses, that they do call 911, starts the chain until we get them to the hospital itself. So dispatchers, first responders, bystanders and everybody is part of that survival chain.
Okay.
But Doug, I hope tonight, I don't need any of you guys, but I know if I do, we've got first-class people that are responding to our emergencies and I'm thankful for that. You know, a lot of times people don't think of that until there's a need, but you guys are there 24/7, 365 and I am very thankful.
Yeah, great job y'all doing. Doesn't have to look too far. You see the calls that goes in through 911 and, you know, what's happening there. So appreciate what y'all do. So any other discussion? If not, I entertain the vote. All in favor of the naming? Raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next on our agenda, recognize Mr. Russell Green for our proclamation to recognize May 6, 2017 as Ellendale Fire Department Day in Alexander County. And if you could, sir, read that proclamation for us also.
I will, sir. I'd like to, if you'll indulge me, Commissioner Reese, I'd like to bring up Chief Joe Carson from the Ellendale Fire Department. Come on up here.
Yes, sir. That'd be good.
Joe's not bashful. Joe has been, this is, he's entering his second year as chief of the Ellendale Fire Department and I'll tell you, those guys, most of you know, and we reported here, they lowered their ISO rating this past summer and I can remind Commissioner Peel, he needs to call his insurance company and make sure they gave him that.
Very appreciative of that.
And I will tell you that Ellendale Fire Department's been very successful. They, they currently have a debt of about 22% on, that's my best recollection, for their revenue stream and that, that's great for a fire department. They're in great shape. Their equipment's good, their building's good. So tonight, we want to adopt, propose a proclamation to recognize May the 6, 2017 as Ellendale Fire Department Day in Alexander County. Whereas the Ellendale Fire Department has been in continuous operation since 1967 until present day and whereas this emergency service organization has provided fire protection, personnel and those things necessary for furnishing such protection to the Ellendale community and whereas the Ellendale Fire Department has proven to be invaluable to the citizens of western Alexander County and whereas Alexander County Board of Commissioners is committed to recognizing and showing appreciation to the dedicated volunteers of this agency and whereas the Ellendale Fire Department will celebrate its 50th anniversary on May the 6, 2017 by inviting the community to the Ellendale Elementary School's ball field for a family day including music, refreshments and kid-friendly activities. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners wishes to commemorate this milestone and hereby proclaims May the 6, 2017 as Ellendale Fire Department Day not only for the Ellendale community, but for all of Alexander County. Adopted this the first day of May 2017. Signed Milton H. Campbell, Chairman.
Chief? Want to say anything?
I just want to say that we're celebrating a 50-year anniversary this year and really want the community to come out and celebrate with this because if it was not for their support, we wouldn't be here. So I really hope we have a good turnout and everyone enjoys Saturday coming up and I just appreciate everybody.
What time things get started Saturday?
That'll be 10 o'clock and we'll wrap up about 2:00.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
We appreciate you taking on the responsibility of being the chief. I know that's a, it's a big job and we do, we do appreciate it, so.
And he has promised me at least two more years.
That's good. Appreciate the work y'all are doing up there, getting those ISOs down. That's a great thing for citizens.
Mr. Chairman, one thing, one thing I would, I would mention, and I don't want to be specific, but there have been instances where there were, well, I can think of one example where there was a fire that was not in the Ellendale district, it was in a different, that was in a different district of the county, but Ellendale was actually the first department to the scene. And that speaks volumes when, when a department beats the home department, I guess you say, to an emergency situation. And in this case, it was a house fire, a major house fire. And, you know, that, that's, that's to be commended without doubt because that shows, that shows the commitment and the seriousness, isn't a good word, but, you know, that Ellendale, Ellendale Volunteer Fire Department take their jobs very seriously.
Yes, sir.
And we absolutely appreciate it.
All of our fire departments have a standing mutual aid agreement, but I can tell you these guys, they're very dedicated to their communities or they wouldn't be doing it. As you know, we've talked about in the past, we're currently looking for some long-range planning from their board presence, but our dedicated group of volunteers are invaluable to this county at this time.
I can't imagine what it's like to get up in the middle of the night and go jump in a house that's on fire. I mean, that's, that's commitment and I'm thankful.
It's even more fun when it's about two degrees.
Mm-hmm. And the chief.
We appreciate greatly what you guys do and the effects you have on our community is just tremendous, so I'd hate to think of not having a fire department. We would truly be in trouble with all of our emergency services, so appreciate that. There's another comment. I'd entertain the motion to approve the proclamation for Ellendale Fire Department Day.
Make a motion, we approve the proclamation for the Ellendale Fire Department.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Being none, I'd ask for all in favor vote, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, chief.
Thank you, sir. Thank all the Ellendale people. And Russell, if you'll just stay still for a minute.
Well, it appears to be proclamation and I appreciate the indulgence. At this time, I'd like to ask Chief Scotty Abernathy, Assistant Chief Chad Cockrell, and in 19 days, he will be Junior Firefighter Kobe Cockrell to come forward.
And?
Has to be 16 years old.
All right.
So 19 more days.
All right. And we're recognizing Stony Point Fire Department, appreciate them too and what they do and it's a great job here.
That, that doesn't mean Kobe hasn't been hanging around the fire department for a lot of years.
Make it official now.
That's exactly right. In 19 days, they can, they can put him on the roster. And I'll ask the chief to speak in just a minute, but I can tell you, Stony Point accomplished the same task at Ellendale they did this past year. They lowered their rating to a class six in their community. The other thing I'll tell you is as of the month of April, they no longer have a debt in Stony Point community and I think that's very commendable for any fire department, any emergency service agency, to this, with the expense of the apparatus and the equipment they use to say, we're totally out of debt. Now, that may not last but a few months and they have to have a truck, but right now, they don't owe anybody anything, so they're in great shape.
Well, that's great.
The proclamation reads, proclamation to recognize June the 3rd, 2017 as Stony Point Fire Department Day in Alexander County. Whereas the Stony Point Fire Department has been in continuous operation since 1957 until present day and whereas this emergency service organization has provided fire protection, personnel and those things necessary for furnishing such protection to the Stony Point community and whereas the Stony Point Fire Department has proven to be invaluable to the citizens of eastern Alexander County as well as western Iredale County. Whereas Alexander County Board of Commissioners is committed to recognizing, showing appreciation to the dedicated volunteers of this agency. Whereas the Stony Point Fire Department will celebrate its 60th anniversary on June the 3rd, 2017 by inviting the community to visit the station for a celebration focusing on available services to promote family health, wellness, safety and education in addition to serving refreshments. Now therefore be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners wishes to commemorate this milestone and hereby proclaims June 3rd, 2017 as Stony Point Day not only for Stony Point community, but all of Alexander County. Adopted this the first day of May, 2017. Milton H. Campbell, Chairman.
Chief?
Thank you, sir.
I want to thank y'all for having us here tonight. I've been there for, I've been there for right at 30 years or a little, little over 30 years and there's a lot of people before me helped lay the foundation. It's kind of made it easy for me and Chief Cockrell to go on, but I've got a wonderful group of people. I've got support from the Fire Marshal's Office, Russell's Office. I've got support from my county commissioners in both counties and I appreciate everything y'all have done for us and look forward to working with you in the future.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and I'd just like to point out something, most people probably don't realize this, you guys cover part of Iredale County too. So do you have any idea how many households or people or land area?
Thirty-seven percent of our district is in Iredale County and the rest of it's in Alexander County.
That's quite a bit.
We run, we run about somewhere between 500 and 600 calls a year and it's usually about half and half, you know. I don't have the breakdown over the fire and the medical, but it's usually, you know, if it's 250, 250, 250, something like that, both counties.
All right.
Well, we appreciate the job you guys do.
And we really hate that you have to go into Iredale County, you know, because that's, I mean, that puts you at a handicap, you know, I mean, that's, that's really unfair.
Yeah. But you guys do a great job. You got a lot of good people down there and we appreciate having us down a couple months ago and it was a good time. Thank you very much. And I've known both of these guys for many, 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 many years, probably longer than I care to remember, so.
Well, I know one thing, in 19 days, you're getting a good fella.
Yes, we are. We was talking about that tonight on the way up here.
Yeah, appreciate everything you guys do. Appreciate the young people being involved in this and we've had discussions here before about different things. You know, it's like the, you know, the younger people don't really be involved really in a whole lot of things, but they're going to have to step up to it because that's the, you know, the future of everything and appreciate the young man who's willing to do that and all the work y'all do.
Yeah, the, the young people are our future. And I mean, Russell, hit me with my numbers. I'd say that volunteer firemen make up 80% across the United States, 75 to 80%.
It's about 80% of emergency services.
Across the United States are volunteer firefighters and the young people are, they're our future.
That's great.
And it's, it is a family tradition. I don't know the other word that I'm trying to think of, but, you know, you've got, just like in this case, you've got fathers passing that tradition of volunteerism down to their sons and wives volunteer and it's, it's just a, it's a big family is what it is and we appreciate all the people down there and no matter what the job they do.
All right. Any other comment? If, if not, I entertain the motion to adopt a proclamation to recognize Stony Point Fire Department Day.
Make a motion to approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, entertain the vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Moving on to number five, the county manager, Rick French, as we are looking over and approving the agreement for medical care services for the inmates of Alexander County Detention Center. Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Green, French?
Thank you, thank you. In your packet, you have a copy of an agreement for, to provide medical service, care, services for inmates of the Alexander County Detention Center. The agreement is between Alexander County and Institutional Medical Services, a company we've had a longstanding relationship with. This agreement is for three years, starting in July 1st, 2017 through July 1st of 2020. It is at the same price we're currently, we're currently paying the company, $17,520 per month and we've been real pleased with the working relationship we've had with this company and we'd recommend approval so we can have the continuation of service. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, but this is sort of a standard agreement. We just want to make sure you're okay with it.
All right. As you stated, this is a renewal of an existing contract that's been in place.
And that's providing 52 hours per week of nursing, screenings, other duties for the care of the inmates.
Yes.
60 hours per week of med tags.
That's much better than the alternative of having to transport the minor, I guess the minor things is really what they look at more here. If it's a major thing, we're still transporting them.
That's correct.
Correct.
Mr., Mr. French, this is just from my, you know, from my knowledge and, I mean, I, and I think, this is kind of what, what, um, Mr. Mayberry had said, but, so basically, this, this covers, you know, the-
Medical care of the inmates.
The kind of, the Nyquil kind of things, coughing, aching, stuff. He had fever, so you can rest, kind, you know.
It also deals with more serious things and-
Well, sure. I mean, I don't mean that, but, you know, but obviously, there's still, I mean, there's still inmates that have to be transported to-
That's correct.
Physicians and to, you know, obviously to hospitals or facilities. But this, I mean, but there's no actual, this is strictly nursing. I mean, basically nursing care.
Over $4,000 a week.
Yeah, it's bad that you gotta spend that money.
Care has to be there.
People just do what they're supposed to do and follow the law.
Any other questions for Mr. French? Um, no other questions. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the medical care services for inmates of Alexander County Detention Center as stated.
Uh, I move to approve the agreement for medical care services for inmates of Alexander County Detention Center, uh, between Alexander County and Institutional Medical Services, a professional corporation.
All right, have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion?
Uh, one, one question. Um, this company, and it's been a while since, uh, we've had, uh, what, what other counties, uh, do they serve in the area?
Catawba, Lincoln, uh, they've done some work in Burke, Lawlick surrounding counties.
Caldwell? Their name's Caldwell?
I'm not sure about Caldwell, but I know they do Catawba and Lincoln.
All right. Uh, if there's no other comments or questions, I'd entertain a vote of-
One, one, well, one other, I'll say, one of the, one of the question, I'm assuming with any contract, you know, with any contractual service, did we, um, were there other vendors?
No, sir. No. This is hard to find this expertise and we've been with them since we were, well, they moved with us into the new facility and they've been with us in the courthouse for some time. Um, but, Mr. Commissioner, we've had, we've had difficulty in the past trying to find somebody to help us on a regular basis, so.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, or, but we went through this, uh, about three years ago and, uh, um, you know, looking around to see what other options we had and, um, this turned out to be the best option. And they're not raising their prices, it's the exact same price, so.
Well, you know, and this is just one of those things that nobody, I mean, you know, nobody wants to pay for.
Right.
Yeah, um, I mean, not, you know, I don't want to seem inhumane in saying that, but, um, you know, Mr. Peele's doing some math, you know, we're at over $50 per inmate per week.
Mm-hmm.
I'd love for somebody to, you know, give my family $50 per person per week to cover our medical expenses, but, you know, and, but I guess we need to go to jail so we can, you know, we can get some benefits.
There's people that have done that.
Oh, I know. I know.
Well, I appreciate your concern, Commissioner.
They throw my kids out.
You know, we all want to look for the best price that we can, but, you know, just as we've already, you know, discussed, there's a cost to that and, you know, once they don't abide by the law and other things happen, we, someone has to foot the bill, I would guess, so, uh, here we are. But, you know, at least there's, there's no increases and, uh, we're, you know, maintaining the same thing. If we don't have it, I would hate to know what the consequences of that would be, so.
Very appreciative for the service, very saddened that we have to do it.
Right. Uh, yeah, and I, and I, and please don't take my comments as, as anything against the, you know, institutional medical, medical services or, you know, any of their folks or anything else, because like I say, um, there are certain things in this world that there's no, there's no happy answer, you know, and sometimes even the best answers are the best, yeah, the best answers not, not the way anybody wants, not exactly what anybody wants anyway, so.
Okay. Um, any other discussion or any questions? I'd entertain a vote of approval, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Uh, moving on to, uh, uh, number six, uh, scheduling of a budget work session. Those are always a lot of fun. Uh, looks like, uh, the schedule is for May the 15th, 2017. Is that correct, Mr. French?
Yes, sir. At 6 o'clock and it'll, it'll be here at CBCC.
Okay, um.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve that, uh, we schedule a budget work session for May 15th, 2017 at 6:00 PM at CBCC.
Okay. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, vote to approve by right hand. Okay. All in favor unanimously? Okay, we'll, uh, move on to item number seven, uh, board appointments and, uh, reappointments. And I'd, uh, ask County Manager Mr. Rick French to help with that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, we have one appointment tonight, uh, appoint Judith Fay to the Senior Center Advisory Committee for three years.
Okay. You have the appointment and I'd like to, there's a little paper there that tells a little about her and who she is. Uh, yeah, the information is good. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to look at that. I would entertain a, a motion to approve, uh, Judith Fay to the Senior Center Advisory Committee.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Judith Fay's, Judith Fay's nomination to the Senior Center Advisory Committee.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other questions or, if not, entertain a vote for approval by raise your right hand. Okay. Unanimous, everyone voted and approved. Thank you. And moving on to item number eight, Budget Ordinance Amendments, 37 and 38. Recognize, uh, County Manager Mr. Rick French again.
Thank you. I have two budget amendments tonight. One, uh, Budget Amendment Number 37 is to revise the JCPC program, uh, budgets and the JCPC council budget to match the revised fiscal year 2017 funding plans as approved by the state on the third quarter accounting reports. And then Budget Amendment Number 38 is to increase the Health Department, uh, budget for additional state funds, STD prevention funds, and to increase, uh, cooperative extension budget for the Farm to Childcare Initiative, a grant from the WK Kellogg Foundation. This private foundation grant is being passed, uh, through the Center of Environmental Farming Systems at NC State University. The total grant amount is $1,000 and we will be split between two county budget years, $667 in fiscal year 2017 and $333 in fiscal year 2018 due to the timing of the learning sessions. And that are the two amendments that we have, Mr., Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. French. Uh, everyone's heard those. Any questions before we move forward? Being no questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve Budget Ordinance Amendments Number 37 and Number 38 as read.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Budget Amendments Number 37 and Number 38.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion at this time? If not, I'd entertain the motion to approve by raise your right hand. Vote's unanimous. I appreciate it. And moving on to item number nine, uh, County Manager's report and recognize, uh, Mr. Rick French once more.
Thank you. A couple of things to, to mention. Uh, one is just to, um, follow up on our last meeting. Um, we now have, uh, an agreement with CBSA Architects, uh, to, for the proposed Alexander County Office Building, which is the Community One Bank Building. They've started that process. There's an agreement, uh, been approved and the budget's been approved by this board. And then on another item, um, Alexander County recently purchased a new software product, um, for implementation and of electronic time sheets replacing the paper-based system that we currently use. And the software has been installed and, uh, training is scheduled for the end of May and we have a tentative go-live date for January 2018. Um, and just, uh, again, we just want your support on this as we move forward. Um, this will be something new that we'll move into, but it'll save on paper, it'll make streamlined operations. It's, it's, um, something that we need to do.
Okay. All right.
That's all I have unless you have any questions.
Any questions? Being none. Thank you, Mr. French. Appreciate that and we want to keep our technology moving forward. Thanks for all of that. Uh, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I move to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Being none, uh, asked for a vote of approval by raising right hand. Motion carries. We're having trouble with these speakers up here, microphones. At this time, uh, we need to, I guess, close our, uh-
One more session.
Need a motion to go into closed session.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, we adjourn into closed, I'm sorry, that, uh, we go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, subsections four, five, and six, to discuss economic development contractual and personnel items. Um, we will reconvene solely to adjourn and, uh, make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? All right. We're now in closed session.